Thank you, Dr. Huskin. Thank you. It is hard to believe that it is the first day of school. We just had the last day like, what, two days ago, I think it felt like. It was my pleasure to attend the convocation that Dr. Huskin spoke about. Not coordinated at all. I didn't know what she was planning to say, but Ms. Huntley's message was tremendous. If you have not, if you have a chance to hear her speak, please take advantage of it. She has a tremendous message.
In response to that, we have a couple things to tell us tonight.
I've got a couple of things for you.
Okay.
Well, good evening to you all. It's a pleasure to be back here with you again. We had a very, very good month of July on construction project. We started, in fact, we had a great summer. We started this summer, if you recall, about seven days back, and right now, as of last week, Thursday, we're one day back now. We made up six days just this summer. The construction teams have really stepped up for us. Right now, we've completed the footers, which are in between the academic wings and the cafeteria area. We're erecting the steel in that same area and in the auditorium. The auditorium is actually for the second level, the mezzanine level. Roofing in the main gym is about 75% complete already, and we've managed to pour the slab on grade in the kitchen area. Right now, I'm sure you've seen, we're installing metal stud framing, HVAC components, and exterior sheeting in the classroom wings. Building interior masonry walls and setting the door frames in the CT areas. I think they have one or two more high walls that go to the deck. Other than that, it's pretty much done. And constructing the new road around the building, and we're setting light poles. I'm sure you've seen all the changes that we've done as far as that goes. And we're still continuing overhead duct work with the domestic water and hydronic piping. And we've got roof and air handling rooms, RTUs. They are continuing to arrive. The chillers are still being installed, and the roof curbs for the air handlers and mechanical equipment are also being set. Brick installation, spray foam installation are still ongoing. I'm sure you'll see, you've seen a lot more of it. They spray it on, it looks yellow, then it turns white, it's cured, and then we can put the brick on it, and you'll see that progress all the way around the building now. Still continuing electrical roughing and pulling wires throughout the building. And the RFP that we put out for cafeteria furniture, we did get responses to that. We've got three responses. We've got responses from Benton Thomas, Hertz, and School Outfitters. My plan is to present those, to put a matrix together so that we can objectively compare these vendors and present that at the next facilities meeting, so that we can all come together and make an informed decision about it. And as Dr. Huskin said, sign the steel. Topping up party scheduled for August 20th, that is a major milestone for the construction project. I hope you're all going to be there for that. On our direct purchase update, did a little bit more. We are sitting at 1.207, and some change in tax savings to date, year-to-date, is almost at half a million dollars. We still have several upcoming purchase orders that we need to procure or put out. All flooring, the storefront glazing, as well as the glass, cased work, auditorium seating, bleachers, CTE equipment, which will be done hopefully shortly, and the cafeteria furniture, also be done shortly. Here's one of your public gang bathrooms. This is on the upside of the gym. You can see they've got it all poured out. Everything's ready to go. Then this next photo here is a closer up shot of it. Those steel stanchions there, there is a masonry wall that goes in front of that. When we get the fixtures, we bolt them through that wall, and they are fixed to that steel there. So don't let anybody tell you that these fixtures just fell down by themselves at some point. It takes some effort. There's the steel columns in the cafeteria area. You can see we've got the roofing materials all set up there also. And I also have, oh, well, here's the slab on grade in the kitchen area. You can see they're finishing out. And I have some aerial photos for you all this month. This was taken this morning. This is looking down from over the existing high school building. You can see where the road is going to go around the building. We'll end up tying it in there this year. Another angle, now you can start seeing the academic wings, and you can kind of see where the steel's going to connect everything together. You're kind of seeing the overall superstructure forming the shape of the building. Another angle of that, and you can see your bus parking lots and your bus parking lot, you've been over the parking lot, and one final view of it, a closer up photo of it. You see the brick is progressing all the way around it, the sheeting on the academic wings right here.
All right. Yep. Coming together?
Coming together.
Thank you for that update. Any questions for Mr. Maraskin? Mr. Clay?
Yes. Your company oversees this project, correct?
Yes, sir.
How often are you guys here on site?
There is one of us here every day.
Every day?
Yes, sir.
Well, I think we need to tighten down on some reins and some things that's going on over there, because we've had some issues that we couldn't get fixed. Safety issues that I presented to Dr. Huskins that called, building people called me about, and it took two or three days to get it fixed. Should have been fixed instantly.
I understand.
Piles of rocks that will sit there in places that teachers couldn't get to their assignment, parking. To me, if it's someone there every day, I shouldn't have to be getting calls and calling our superintendent about, about safety issues, fencing, signs, and stuff like that. You know, as taxpayers call me and ask me about the money that's being spent, how are we spending it? To be able to reach out to someone and say, hey, we need this done ASAP because we've gotten a call from a building official, and then we have to fight to get it done, to me is kind of hindrance in the process. I don't think we should be overlooking the school board members, overlooking the project, and getting calls on things that are easily fixed by someone who's looking over the project.
Well, I understand that, sir. But the incident you're talking about with the fencing, they had to move the fencing when they constructed the new roads. And then they had already ordered fencing, and it was going to be installed, but we had that heavy downpour that day, so it pushed us off a day.
But even before that, when you've got no sign saying this is a construction site, and you've got everybody in Halifax County can go over there and walk through it without any signs, at the end of the day, who's allowed up there? It falls on us. It does. It falls on us. I mean, there was nothing over there that was preventing people from walking around that site doing what they want to do. And, you know, piles of gravel in the way that we've got to call on Sunday afternoons to get moved. Personally, I'm one person, but I would like to see a little more hands-on to get things moving quicker, so you don't have to tie up, we don't have to tie up Dr. Huskins with issues over there at the new building.
Understood.
Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Ms. Hastings, do you have something, and then I'll let Mr. Fox.
What was that follow-up? Were you following up with him?
Okay.
Yes, sir. We had him up. They were on the fence, and they just didn't have the new fencing up to put those, to transfer those signs onto it.
requires you to have it up. I mean, you know, that was what was just related to me, not related to the term.
We had spoken to Mr. Otis Vaughn. He was actually in DC. It was one of his assistants that made the phone call. We had talked with Mr. Vaughn, and he was okay with our plan of action at that time.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good. Ms. Hastings?
Yeah, I had a question about the furniture, the RFP for the furniture, and Dr. Buckman might have to remind me, or between both of you. At one point, there was something where the school board was going to owe $3 million for the remaining portion of the high school, which we still haven't determined where it's coming from yet. But you were able to get that down to 2.45 million, and I remember there was something with furniture. Is this the same furniture we're talking about? Is it going to come out from the high school $129 million budget, or is it coming from something else?
Yeah.
Good evening. To answer the question, the plan is to take a portion of our cafeteria excess funds to provide equipment and some furnishings for the cafeteria and kitchen that will come out of a separate fund. So it will be in addition to, to help bring down our 2.5.
So my follow-up, then, is that going to save money in the high school project, then, since we're funding some of the cafeteria?
With the school purchasing it themselves directly, we are saving that tax money automatically. And by putting this RFP out, we have sealed competitive bids that we need to review. And with those bids, there are a few, some of the vendors actually gave us different options also, different price points. So there's just a lot to review, but we can scale back or give it all in, as much as we need, as much as we feel we can need and afford.
All right. Anyone else? Yes. Michelle?
The signs, because the signs have been up. Our tags required, say glasses required, all of that. This issue, a, because the old fence is coming down, the signs are going down.
Exactly, ma'am.
Now know that you're reaching out to project manager.
They have my number, and they also have Chaka's number also.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else for Mr. Maraskin? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Ms. Hastings?
Good evening. How are you?
I'm great. How are you?
Doing great.
Good evening. Dr. Huskin, Chairman Mason, Vice Chairman Lloyd, and other board members. I am Melanie Hastings, Director of CTE Innovation and Counseling, and it is my pleasure to formally invite each of you to attend this year's Career and Technical Education showcase. The showcase will be held on the evening of October 17th at the Southern Virginia Higher Education Center. This free event is a chance for everyone in our community to come and see what career and technical education, or CTE, looks like in Halifax County. All of our programs, those offered at the high school and the Career Tech Academy, will be represented. Students and instructors will provide live demonstrations, and attendees can tour the lab spaces for HVAC, welding, IT, energy, and automation robotics. This is an opportunity for students, parents, and community members to learn more about the pathways available at the middle school and beyond. Local employers and current students will share the opportunities and benefits of career and technical education. There will be food trucks, door prizes, and childcare available for children between the ages of three and seven. We are also planning to provide a virtual tour of the new high school during the welcome session. Skilled workers are needed in every industry sector, and having a skilled workforce impacts our community's economic competitiveness. Please gather your friends and family and join us on October 17th to learn more about how CTE helps develop that skilled workforce and show your support of CTE in Halifax County. Thank you.
Yes.
Cosmetology will not be at this year's showcase. That will be a program that is new for next year, that will hopefully be represented at next year's showcase. No, we do not have a space. to learn more about how CTE helps develop that skilled workforce and show your support of CTE in Halifax County. Thank you. Cosmetology will not be at this year's showcase. That will be a program that is new for next year that will hopefully be represented at next year's showcase. No, we do not have a space for cosmetology or a teacher. We have to get that for next year. That will, it's included in the new high school building, but we do not have that program in action right this moment. Yes, in the new building. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Medley and Mr. Barker. GPS rollout update, and I guess y'all are going to tell us what these things are for.
Yep, absolutely. Good evening. I'm Jonathan Medley, interim Director of Transportation. I'm Huskin to the Board. Don't know where to start per se, because yes, this is the first day of school and wow, it was very taxing in transportation. That's why we have to look that we have, because we got it done though. In my 40 years of experience with the transportation, it's always a busy day. The first day of school, even the week, can spill over. But, um, I'm looking forward to a great thing. We got all the children to school safely. We got them back home safely. Yes, there were some hiccups. Our day pretty much started at 5:00 AM and ended about 6:00. But, uh, it's part of transportation. We realize that the students see our bus drivers are faithful, earnest bus drivers first, and then make their way to the school. And of course, our bus drivers are the last ones to say, "Have a good evening" to our children. So I respect the bus drivers highly. I find favor in them. But our GPS to move on simply say, we are getting it up to speed. It has been purchased. Uh, at this point, we are requiring our drivers to do the time check and also to do the required inspection, pre-trip inspection on their bus. Uh, some have grasped for it and some are still struggling, but we have it so we can still stay with inside of the law of getting our pre-trip done. Uh, it's going to be good, just like we had kids on the wrong buses this afternoon, because parents bring their children to school that morning and they put them in the hands of the bus driver who have no idea where they get off at. But this GPS system is going to have it so that, uh, every child's name, address will be on the tablet. Kid can walk up on the bus, tap their name, and bam, it gives the driver an idea, a close idea of where he or she will get off the bus. So we're looking forward to that. We're asking our drivers to compile their routes, get them together. We give them a two-week span, and then we're going to implement them into our system so life can be better. And this time Stephen, our IT gentleman, will share with you the ins and outs of the GPS.
Alright. So I'm Stephen Barker. I'm the database specialist here. Um, this has become my main responsibility for the time being is getting the software rolled out. Uh, these are the tablets. Each of you have one in front of you. Uh, I created a login for you all, 1111. If you want to log in, you can see what the bus drivers will be seeing on a daily basis. It will ask you to confirm the bus. You can just say confirm there. Yeah, once it, once it loads. That's right. I just confirmed the bus that it comes up. Everybody should hopefully have come up the same. But this is just so you can see what they're looking at. We have the inspections right there in the middle. We have the time clock on the right. And then on the left, when you click on my runs there, they pull up and they have the AM and the PM already programmed in. If you click on either one of those, um, AM or PM runs, you can go through and see the students on that run. You can see the addresses that they'll be stopping at. And you can see turn-by-turn directions, and then that's also where they go to to start the navigation. The slideshow. Alright, so, uh, bus routing made it easy. The Tyler system allows you to draw the boundary for your district. It also allows for out-of-district routing with global maps. Uh, we can split it up by the elementary schools, individual. We can build routes based on that district as well. We can track the GPS data from the bus. We can pull the speeds from the bus. Lots of safety factors there. Uh, my favorite part about it is right there at the bottom, the secure cloud environment. I can work on this thing from anywhere that I have internet access. By logging into the, uh, the web-based platform there. Yeah, it gives the drivers the stop location, uh, their routes, the pickup times. It will eventually have the parent app where the parent can see where their child's bus is. Um, have, if there's a delay or anything like that, they'll hopefully, they'll reduce some of the calls into transportation, some of some of those issues. Uh, then we have a short video. This is actually from the Tyler Transportation website. Sorry.
Tyler Drive provides turn-by-turn directions to each scheduled stop, manages student ridership, records pre- and post-trip vehicle inspections, and electronically logs employee hours. First, your transportation team develops routes for your district using your Tyler Student Transportation Solution, Traversa or Versatrans, designating the safest, most efficient way for your students to be picked up and dropped off each day. When a driver logs into a Tyler Drive unit, their assigned run is uploaded using the exact route and stops you built. Tyler Drive provides the driver with route-specific directions to each stop, following district policy and safety guidelines. It can provide visual directions or audio only with the screen blacked out while the bus is in motion. These electronic directions are significantly safer for drivers and riders compared to paper route sheets, as they allow the driver to keep both hands on the wheel and both eyes on the road. They also make it faster and easier to onboard new drivers or teach sub-drivers a new route. At each stop, Tyler Drive shows the names and photos of the students who are assigned to board or lead the bus at this location. As students enter or leave the vehicle, they scan a radio frequency identification card, or RFID, over the Tyler Drive card reader. This creates a record of when and where the student scanned. The driver is also alerted to students attempting to board the wrong bus or exit at unassigned locations. As each student scans their card, their parent or guardian receives an alert on a secure, integrated mobile app. Tyler Drive has an internal GPS allowing you to manage vehicle location in real time or track and trace the vehicle location, speed, and heading of the vehicle at earlier points in time. Before and after each run, the drivers can undock Tyler Drive and take it with them as they perform their pre- and post-trip vehicle inspections. Tyler Drive provides a customizable checklist and can require a signature from the bus driver to help ensure a thorough inspection. Tyler Drive also manages employee timekeeping. Staff, including drivers, aides, and mechanics, can clock in or out on the tablet so that they don't have to go to the depot to punch in. With Tyler Drive, you can enhance the safety of your students, improve communication, increase efficiency, and provide oversight over your district's transportation. Tyler Technologies. To learn more, visit the web, tylertech.com/tylerdrive.
Alright, so the only caveat about that is we are not using the card readers. We don't have that part of the implementation, but everything else, that was a pretty accurate depiction of the software and what it's capable of. So it'll give us the ability to, anybody sit at a desk and see on a computer screen all of our bus routes, where our buses are at any given moment. It will give the public, the parents, the ability to see when their kids have gotten on the bus, when they've gotten off the bus, where the bus is. And overall, I think, once we get everything worked out, it's going to be, it's going to be a decent system. That's, that's pretty much all I have. Does anybody have any questions about it, any?
Michelle?
Thank you for that overview. It looks great. Thank you for bringing the tablets as well to, to let us see that. No, um, a question on timing in terms of the parent app. I understand bus drivers are getting used to the app and GPS again and routes. Um, what kind of timeframe are we looking at with the app load?
Um, so I don't think we have a hard timeline set. We're hoping to have all the routes in place by about mid-September, and then at that point, we're looking to go live with the app. We still have to get the training on our end for the app, uh, before we let it out to the public. But hopefully shortly after mid-September.
Have, um, when bus driver has to take the route, are they were able to select two different buses? Is it just the route or does it
So it could work either way. I could do it at the office. One of us could, um, add students to that route. We could take one bus and, and split it amongst two buses. Or if it has to happen on the fly, the driver can add any student in our district to his route by searching for the student's name.
Yeah, Mr. O'Vale?
Yes, sir. I, I understand how the card reader function works. Can you explain the functionality of the system if you're not using the card reader? How does that work?
Yes, so ideally, especially with the older kids, we're going to have the students next to their name. They'll tap the word load. That's it. And then when they get off, they'll tap the word unload. With some of the younger ones, the bus drivers will have to help with that, but basically they step on the bus, hit load, keep going.
And that will still allow parents to track?
It'll, it'll be the same as if they had scanned their card. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Fox?
Justin. I was excited to see you guys at the firework that I'm having. How are we going to get to reading?
To be honest, I'm not sure about that part. I don't know if we're intending to do that. The card reader?
It has not been brought to our attention yet. That's definitely going to be a future thing. I think it'd be wise.
I'm in favor of it as well, if that's And, and you still will. You, you still will because we'll, you know. Tap their own name, yeah.
Ms. Williams?
Is her name included? That's in your mom raises her school every day?
Her name is in the system, but she won't be on a route. Uh, but if someday she had to ride the bus, the bus driver could search, find her name, and add her to that, his or her route. Yeah, so it'll synchronize with our F and N campus system, so any student that's in our F and N campus will end up in the Tyler system as well. And to follow up on your card reader, um, we, when they did the installation, they went ahead and put in everything necessary. If we do add it later, it'll be just plugging it in. If that does get installed. Yes, sir.
Ms. Rodney?
Hey, thank you for, um, for, for bringing everything in. I was able to see this a little bit ahead of time in the safety committee. Um, I'm a little bit more familiar about all this stuff. Well, this can do a route, but you know, like you said, I, I definitely have a special respect for our bus drivers. Um, one thing that I wanted you to make sure that the parents as well as bus drivers understood. I've had a couple of concerns, um, from bus drivers as well as parents stating that, um, they were concerned about the safety effects of having to stop long enough to tap and unload or load button. Can you explain so that everybody understands how quickly that process gets and that there is no delay in just sitting in traffic while you're doing that?
Right, so when, when you come to a scheduled stop on your route, the kids that are supposed to get off on that route or get on are going to automatically pop up. Their names are going to automatically pop up. If they don't pop up, the next stop that you were headed to is already there. You can click on the word service, and then those names immediately pop up. As they're getting on, it's just a tap by their name, and they continue on to their seat.
Okay. And then also, can you confirm, um, that when the students are pulled up, um, on the specific bus route, they're not going to have to search through to find a student at that time when they are at their stop? Those are the only students that come up, so
That is correct.
They can't tap anyone else's name unless there are multiple children getting off at that stop with them?
Yes, so group stops will be the only situation where they would have multiple names on the screen at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Alright. Thank you both for working on this. Appreciate what you did.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, uh, Mr. Carver?
Evening. I'm Mr. Mason. Dr. Huskin, fellow school board members. Um, I'm here tonight to discuss some surplus items that accumulate. Like I said, the reason I'm here tonight to discuss items, we have a storage facility at the Pace Academy where we store all the surplus items that accumulate. Um, when it, but once it gets full, we usually have a public auction. And once we decide everything is not needed anymore, we'll have a public auction and, and try to get rid of it. Most of it is kind of unwanted, undesirable stuff. And finding a location to, to have a public auction is pretty challenging. And then you got the, you got the manpower thing. It usually takes five men a week to move everything. And then if like it's not sold, we have to move it again. So, um, what I've been looking into is doing an online auction. We've now used the online auction so that this will be a new experience. And while browsing through GovDeal's website, I noticed that many of the school systems use this company. And GovDeal charges 12 and a half percent bio-spay. No cost to us. It's strictly bio-spay. We don't get into shipping. They come pick it up. So, uh, I'll take pictures of the items, write a short description, send it to them. They put it on the website for 10 days, take bids. After the 10 days, they'll get in touch with me with a win and bid, and I approve it. Once it's approved, GovDeal collects money and sends it to Halifax County, that is, to people by a wire or by a check. Um, I've already started an account with them. We haven't finished our details, but they haven't got that far yet, but, um, I picked up 10 items. A test run, so to speak. So, um, I got 10 items that I want to put on to see, make sure we don't have any hiccup, see, see how it goes. So we have a plasma cutter, TIG welder, MIG welder, all those missing parts. Most of this is not desirable stuff.
Okay.
We got a pallet of, uh, torch and braiding materials. Isle cabinets, we have file, file cabinets, um, computer tables. That kind of stuff is just, just 10 items. So, what I'm here for tonight is, is asking permission to move on, move forward with this. Be 10 items this month. This will be a ongoing monthly thing. It'll probably grow once we get all the things started.
Okay. And the, uh, fundraisers for this would go towards?
They'd go to the Halifax County Public Schools.
Okay. Go towards buying new desks, new whatever, for the new school, whatever things.
Well, that was a lie. I'm, I'm not sure.
Sure.
I won't get it.
I, that, that was certainly what I was looking to, but
Just for clarification, like, there's rules about, like, when some things are purchased, like if it's bought for, if there's food, if food, like surplus food item, like, there's USDA rules about how it can be sold and what, where the money has to go back into that fund. If it's bought with a Title I item, it would have to go back into the Title I. So there's, it depends on what we sell and where the money would have to go back into. So we would just follow all those procurement rules and the money would go back into those allocated pots. So, that's how that would go.
Average of eBay, as you said.
Yep, it's eBay for schools. Yeah, he just needs a motion to
In discussion? Uh, Mr. Fox, question? Yes?
Yes, it's bio-spay, not from us. Well, that'll be the way they put it, that's
The website can be the same?
Yes.
Yeah.
It could be. Um, I'm assuming, like I said, we ain't worked out the deal yet. I'm assuming that I'm assuming that it'll be on that, that it'll be a twelve and a half percent bio-sweet. I went to the website, looked, and now it's on the items, whatever you got that fits. But a tail back percent.
Any other questions? Got a motion, then we got a second? No other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose say no? Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Davis.
Chairman Mason, Vice Chair Lloyd, School Board members, Dr. Hudson, good evening. If you recall at the legal work session that you held on May the 8th, you all discussed a lot of things with the, with your school board attorney. One thing that came out of that was some conversations regarding staff interventions and student altercations. And you as a board had charged the school board attorney to research this information and come back with a draft policy for you all to take a look at and to possibly approve. So tonight, just bear with me, I would like to read this entire policy publicly. This is policy, and this is a draft, let me clarify that. Policy JMA, Staff Interventions and Student Altercations. Staff members are encouraged but are not required to intervene in student altercations if they reasonably believe that their intervention can minimize harm to themselves or others. Staff members should intervene in altercations only to the extent required to physically restrain the students involved in the altercation and to stop as soon as the risk of physical harm to themselves or others has dissipated. Staff members will not face discipline for making a decision to intervene in student altercations or not intervene, provided the staff member exercised reasonable care in the making this decision. And if the teacher did choose to intervene, use reasonable care in intervening. Staff decisions to intervene in student altercations will be considered reasonable in most cases if the staff member intervened, one, to maintain order and control, two, to quell a disturbance, three, to prevent a student from inflicting physical harm on themselves, four, for self-defense or defense of others, or five, to obtain possession of weapons or other dangerous objects or controlled substances possessed by a student involved in the altercation. This policy is in line with the Virginia Code, and I think a lot of this verbiage that the school board attorney took from the Virginia Code just to make sure that we are covered on all ends. So tonight, I would ask for you to approve this draft policy so that we can move expeditiously included in our policy made.
I think a motion to approve the policy.
In discussion?
Well, certainly, that's something, Mr. Potts, we can include some educational information for our students. And to go a step further, there's a lot of things that are being done in the school with the SEL and with the peer mediation that has been provided at the secondary levels.
Follow-up?
Just, we did this summer at our administrative retreat, we had someone from DCJS come and do a whole day of de-escalation. They did, they got professional development hours, got the training, went through that from DCJS. That's significant. And that was, that was a result of the work session, you all had asked for that. And so as part of our administrative retreat, we did ask DCJS to come in.
After that training, why do you do some of the values and justice?
Well, this is policy, and so the policy is just straight from the Virginia Code. This is whether, this is just saying that, you know, you can't really rewrite Virginia Code. And so...
Well, we have a motion and then a second, and we vote.
Well, well...
So I, I think the first, your first sentence protects your staff and everyone else. If you read the first sentence, it says, "You're encouraged but are not required." I think it protects you. It's not telling you to intervene, not telling you not to intervene. It's telling you you can. It's also saying that you're not required to. And that is written from Lloyd, who's got to mitigate this if something happens. We start adding stuff to it, then we have issues. But I would think that first sentence is the protection of our people. You read it, pretty much protects it on both ends.
Can you confirm again that they did do that training this summer?
They did do that, but I'm not sure how to write that into this particular code. That is a strat, that would be a strategy or something that you could write into, into somewhere else in your practice. That is a, that is a practice, and that, that's not necessarily something you could put into a policy made. That is something you would do as a, as a practice or as something you would just do as a guiding, something that would guide you or to prove that, that you are following this policy. This is, this would be the policy, and then how are you showing that you are following the policy? Say, okay, in order to show that we are upholding this, this, what we say we're doing, we are going to do the following strategies. We're going to do these things. We're going to provide support to our teachers by A, B, and C, by de-escalation strategies. We're going to maintain positive behavior supports in the classroom. You know, whatever the, whatever the list of strategies are that we do to support the teacher.
Michelle, you had something, after Mr. Potts, you have other comments?
Yeah, it's... I was able to examine this. Yes. On my... First, I was doing something. Really... I've been... For years, I was in the new environment to do so. As a... Teachers are... I am very grateful, sir. Training. I'll be that one. Last year, I did, did teach. And we had several teachers injured themselves because they, they took that responsibility to try and help. I thank them, and I... Have them... Full expectations. Provides that.
They got the hours, right?
They got the hours, and they got the presentation sent to them, and they got... It was thorough.
I mean, it's not our responsibility...
Some of the people are sitting in this room, you can, you can ask some of the, I mean, they're sitting in this room, and they, they went through the class, I mean...
I think, I mean, I think we have a responsibility to provide it to them, but if they sit in the class and don't pay attention, that's not on us.
And also, yeah, and during that work session that Mr. Davis alluded to, it was brought to attention that we had no policy on this at that time.
Correct. So, we have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? All those in favor of adopting this policy say aye. Aye. Oppose say no? Motion carries?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Get a motion to convey into, into flow session? Second motion, any other discussion on that? I thank you all.